Call this meeting to order, please. 6:06, sorry it's six minutes late, we'll just be here six minutes later tonight. First, we have a couple presentations. I'll turn it over to Patty or Lynn for the first presentation.
Point of order?
Yeah.
We called, but Union 38 did not call.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna, that's why Ken cut it back tonight and call the Union 38 meeting to order.
Thank you.
Can I ask why David's doing?
Ken's out, Ken won't be here till a little later.
How do we choose who's the next person?
Would you like to do it?
Sure.
If you'd like to.
I mean, I'm just asking the question.
There's no particular reason except that Ken told us he was gonna be late and so I'm happy to do it, but I have no ownership interest in this whatsoever, there's no nefarious plan.
Does Union 38 have a vice?
I don't think they did, that's why, so they just said, "Do it." But I'm happy to switch seats if you'd like.
Why don't you do it, Cindy?
We could do it by acclamation if we want. Somebody has to open and close and sort of move it along, I think, for the Union, so...
And take notes, too.
And rather than reschedule it till Ken shows up. Just happy to... I think maybe 45 minutes or something?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm sort of new at this, but maybe we should at least approve that you're doing it, or nominate others, you know, sort of have a vote of some sort?
I did ask Ken a couple different times about chair, he's retiring where he is, and I asked him what kind of capability he's gonna be doing and working with the thing, and he seems like he still wants to do, you know, help out whenever he can, still be chair. Unfortunately, he has other obligations. We do not have a vice chair that I know of. I'm on Union 38 also, and Frontier, so...
How about a former chair? Jamie Isler used to do it when Ken cut it back with... No, 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 a wrong chair. But you're well versed, Cindy.
Bobby, you can bolt.
At one time, I did bolt, that one time when Regina was here, I was Union 38 Chair and Frontier Chair. So I don't wanna do that again, but...
It's as easy as ask them for a motion, so we can move this along.
I make a motion that David Sharp steps in temporary till Ken gets here to be Chair of Union 38.
Second.
All in favor? All Unions, okay, let's... Can you raise your hands again, please? Against? One. Stay? So pass. Now, like, now we're gonna have a couple nice presentations, and I'll turn it over to Lynn and Patty.
Good evening, thanks for having us here tonight. I wanted to bring forward our new Food Service Director, her name is Mary DeLusa, and she's going to talk about her plans and her visions for the program. And so, Mary, if you'd like to just stand and try to project loudly.
Hi, everybody, thank you so much for giving me time in your meeting today to go over our school lunch program. I kinda wanted to start on a high note and just give out a couple of appreciations. First and foremost, I would just like to appreciate all of the women who work in our cafeterias. They have gone above and beyond since I've taken over. They've really stepped up to all of the challenges I presented to them, and all of these challenges that this school year has presented, and they have just come out for the better and have been amazing, super help, and they make me look good. So thank you so much to the women, there's a few of them here tonight. Thank you so much. My appreciation is to the principals and all five of our schools, they've really been a support system to me, I'm very new to this position, they've been patient, you know, they've answered questions, they've listened to my crazy ideas, because I have a lot of them, and they've been a huge support and an assistance to me in the four months that I've been doing this, or five, four, or five. So thank you guys very much for your time and your support, I really, it's really much appreciated. I'll try to keep this short and sweet, I made a list of a lot of the new things that we've been doing in our school district since I took over in November. One of my goals, and one of my continued goals, is to open up communication with parents, and to really, you know, keep them in the loop about their students' balances, what's going on with the cafeteria, allow them to have a voice, and really to allow them to have access to myself and to our program. So I know there's a few parents in the room here that could attest to it, but we've put out a newsletter once a month, every month since I've started, it's a district-wide newsletter, it features local farmers, homemade delicious things that are happening in our kitchens, it's got information about the free and reduced lunch program, a cafeteria mission statement, as well as all of my contact info for parents. In addition to that, we've started putting out monthly balance updates to all of our parents, letting them know if their student has a negative balance or a positive balance, eliminating room for a lot of error that was missed with no communication or a lack of communication, and that's been super helpful, and we've seen a lot of positivity from that. A few other things that we're doing to boost student participation is kids' choice menu planning. We've introduced this in all four of our elementary schools since I started. It's by grade, so each month, one grade receives a ballot, and they vote on what's gonna go on our school lunch menus. I did give some packets to our principals to hand out to individual school committees, so they can see the menu, how bright, how colorful it is, but each day, that's a kids' choice option, says kids' choice on there, and lets, you know, lets them know that their voice is being heard, and we're serving the food that we want, like, they wanna see, you know, we wanna feed the kids what they wanna eat. In addition to that, we're getting ready to launch a student survey at Frontier, because I don't think the ballot option is really a great idea for Frontier. So we're getting ready to do an online survey, I'm just putting together all of the marketing for that. I guess there's something called the QR code, so they could take a picture and do the survey on the spot, so I'm trying to get that all set up, just so that it's fun and it's hip for the kids, so that they're having a voice, too. You know, they could go have pizza, or they could go have Subway right down the street, and we really wanna get those kids here and having lunch with us, and we wanna make it better than our competition down the street, you know. In addition to that, to increase staff participation, three out of our five schools are doing Friday staff lunch specials. Conley is our third school, they're getting ready to launch their staff special Fridays tomorrow, which is very exciting, so if you're in Conley, please order some lunch. We do it at Frontier, as well as Deerfield, Whiteman, and Sunderland have outstanding staff participation, but I'm sure we can launch it in those schools as well. So those are kind of all the things we're doing to increase student staff participation. My long-term goal is to always increase, you know, increase our numbers, increase our participation, increase the quality of food that we're doing. Those things are for that. Also, I have a meeting once a month with our principals in each of the schools, we discuss, you know, my financial numbers, we discuss outstanding student debt, which is something that, you know, we need to address as a district, all of my ideas and things like that. From those meetings, we've been able to start doing a system where we have the principals or their secretaries call the parents of children that have $50 or more debt in their school lunch accounts, and we've seen a ton of positivity on this. Since I took over, I think it was around November or December, we had a little over $11,000 in unpaid lunch dues, and today I checked it and we had about $9,600. And we've seen a ton of positivity in the schools for this, particularly in Sunderland. In November and December, they accounted for over half of our student lunch debt, and they are around, they are at currently around $3,800 in student lunch debt, which is a huge improvement, it was about $7,000 when we started. So we've seen a ton of positivity in contacting the parents. A few of the fun things that we're doing is partnering with local farms. Right now, we just started a new partnership with Joe Sikowski Farms, which has been happening. We're getting ready to start partnering with Atlas Farms again, because they have, they're gonna have a larger price list and variety of produce, because the season is changing, and we're really excited to bring some local organic produce into our schools. We currently partner with Pine Hill Orchards for our apples, and Cartdale Fruit Farms as well. A few other things to address is my training and my growth. Since I've just taken over this position and I'm new to the Food Service Director position, I've been trying to partner with outside groups to further my learning, to give me good ideas, to help me have sound business practices. I've partnered with John C. Stocker Institute, they do the Smarter Lunchroom Scorecard. So we have a coach who came to Frontier to evaluate us for our fresh fruits and vegetables, and how to market that better to our students. She really loved everything that we're doing. Obviously, there's always room to improve, so I was able to create an action plan based on the scorecard that works for our school, for all of our schools, that is easy to accomplish, and I'll be able to have good results for her when she returns in May. And we also work with Northbound Ventures. Franklin Regional Council of Governments received a grant to do, I think it's called School Nutrition Best Practices, and Holly Fowler of Northbound Ventures was able to come into our school at no cost, she went to Sunderland and evaluated their breakfast and lunch program, and is putting together a packet for us to, you know, tell us what we're doing good, to share with other schools, but also to point out ways that we could be doing better, because we always wanna be doing better for our kids. I have a one-year-old, so I have to think about it in the long-term perspective, am I gonna feed him this food when he's the age of your children? And I would like to say, yes, I would. Lastly, a couple things that I wanna highlight as successes in our school district is that, as Patty will be able to tell you, she has some handouts for you, we have been able to successfully lower food costs, we're continuing to work with our vendors to get the best pricing for our items that we need to purchase, as well as able to negotiate with some of our other vendors, like our propane company, to lower our costs. All of the people in our school that are, all of the people in our kitchens that are taking responsibility and helping with ordering and things like that, are really helping me to put together a more... Basically, we're shopping smart, we're looking through all of our items, we're looking through all of our bids, we're making sure we're getting the best price for our value, and we're trying to purchase as, you know, cheaply as we can, but not sacrifice the quality. The last two things I have is our meals per service hour, which Patty also has a printout for you guys. When we had Jim, like, Jim Halstead, that's his name, came in and evaluated all of our programs last year to see kind of what was going on, and what the issue was, he had us at an average of 7.8 meals per service hour. And since I've taken over in November, our district as a whole is at a 9.2. When I took over the position, I understood that I was supposed to at least try and get us up to 10 meals per service hour by the end of this school year, and I'm happy to report that most of three, I believe it's three of our schools are at least at a 10 every month, if not higher, and some schools have even seen as high as 12 to 15, so the meals per service hour is going up. Lastly, I did pass out a handout around the table, there's not a lot. We have a handful of women who have always taken responsibility in our schools, who have always, you know, helped get the order together, check in order, go through the government commodities, basically the right-hand person to the Food Service Director, who was here before. So what we're proposing is a job description, to give them a title, to give them an official position, and a salary scale, which is on the back of that page, you might have to share. I know you're not voting on it tonight, but there's a handout for you to consider in a salary, a salary pay scale. Is there any questions or comments, or, I don't know how it works, but open it up.
I'd just like to qualify, when we were talking about the school lunch program, we had told you that we would be bringing the proposal from the team leaders in January, and this is the proposal, because this was the recommended structure for the program, with one overseeing Food Service Director, because she couldn't be in five schools at all times. So we're bringing this through your review, it will be on your May agenda to vote, so I just wanted to say that.
I just wanted to comment, I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work you've done, and your staff.
Oh, thank you, they're awesome, if you guys have lunch with them, please, I don't know, because they work really hard. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
People got any questions? Bob?
Food Service Team Leader, it's food made, alright? Where we wanna find the names of the papers?
One of the things that Mary and I are doing, our next charge is to start doing budgeting, there's never been budgets done, and as I said, when we had our program reviewed, this was the proposed structure. We talked about after hiring the director, we would be bringing this to you in January. So this, we're a little, we're a couple months late bringing it to you, but this is the proposed new structure, that each school will have one Food Service Director, one Team Leader, and then how many cafeteria? People?
So they were having a full-time, basically, seven-hour-a-day position for a Team Leader?
They already have it.
They would share the Food Service Director position?
They would what?
Share the Food Service Director.
We are sharing it, yes.
Okay. And my question, basically, is this person gonna replace somebody that's already...
Nope.
...on staff? So this is gonna add an additional layer?
Somebody's already in the schools doing that job every day.
But that was my question.
They are, they already exist.
Somebody's gonna have a title, we're not gonna end up with another Bob.
Correct.
Correct.
We're just giving them the title.
That's the way I understood what you said. Yes.
No, everybody, every school already has one of these people, they just, we've never formalized the position, and that's what we're trying to do.
I just wanna make sure we're not adding the position.
No.
We're just changing the title from one of the programs.
The person who does take the responsibilities is going to be given the title Team Leader.
But my point is, we're not adding additional staff.
Again, no, we are not, there's already a person in each of the buildings doing this job, no additional people will be added.
I think you guys are gonna agree. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to have Karen Farandino, Karen Farandino, the Director of Special Ed, get up and just give us a quick update on our Special Education Task Force. They've been working all year, been working with Karen and a consultant, Sharon Jones from the Collaborative, and I'd just like an update, I brought it to you several times, but, thank you, Karen.
Hi, I know most of you, for those of you who look at new faces, my name is Karen Farandino, I'm the Director of Special Education. Patty just told me to talk louder, usually people don't have to tell me to talk louder. So, well, before I get into the task force, one of the other things that Dr. Carrie asked me to just touch base with is, if you know Special Education, a lot of time and commitment goes into compliance, it's not very exciting, but the team here, the administrators, the faculty, everybody spends a lot of time on compliance and making sure we have systems that just up and run, so we don't have to spend a lot of time and resources worrying about being in compliance. Just to give you an idea of how that works, is every six years, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education comes in and does pretty much an audit, they call it a coordinated program review, on 55 criteria. This year, we're doing what we call a mid-cycle review, we're right in the middle of that six years, so we did a mid-cycle review. They come in and they look at the things that you've, were found to be in partial compliance or non-compliance three years ago. It wasn't many of them, because you have a very strong district and is up and running, but I'm happy to inform you today that four of your five schools were found in 100% compliance, we have no corrective action plans, we have nothing that they found to even be in partial compliance. For anybody who knows Special Education, that's quite an accomplishment, so I really just wanna acknowledge the faculty and the team that were able to do that. Here in the larger school, we only had two things that we do have to, forums that we didn't have filled out 100% of the time, and it will be an easy correction. So I just wanna note how well, when we're looking at building programs and building systems to take care of students, all our time and energy can go into that because of how well we do the compliance part. So, moving on, at the beginning of this school year, it was kind of noted, wow, you know, we have a pretty incredible Special Education program, we have pretty incredible schools. No student in the elementary schools is placed out of district, they, all of them are supported here within our district. And started to look at the progress that we've made here at Special Education and working collaboratively with the general education and the principals and the school systems as a whole, and said, what if we spent time and resources putting together a task force? And that task force goal was really to put together what we call a strategic plan, and we'll be bringing you that strategic plan after you hear a little bit about it tonight. It's not typed up, but they brought in, the district brought in Sharon Jones from the Collaborative of Educational Services, used to be the Hampshire Educational Collaborative, and there's been a team of about 15 educators throughout the district from every school meeting. We've met about six times for about three hours, again, led by Sharon Jones. And the idea was, we're gonna set a vision, we're gonna do a strategic plan. It's never really been done before, it's not done in many school systems, in which they really spend the time and energy to say, we really wanna focus on what our foundation is, what we do really well, what is our vision for the next five years or so, and how are we gonna make a plan to get there? And again, that's recognizing that we have a very strong foundation, what we really wanna do is, how do we, what I call, stay ahead of the wave, how do we keep moving forward? When you're working at this high level of no students out of district, you don't wanna just keep maintaining, because eventually you're gonna get a little turbulence, and it's gonna get messy, so we really had to set our sights on the future. The very first thing we did is set a vision, I'm just gonna tell it to you tonight, the vision of our school district in Special Education is to decrease the impact of the disability while increasing participation in the natural environment. So it was time to stop just thinking about services, stop just thinking about IEPs, and really thinking, what is it that we're doing for students? And what we're doing for students, again, is decreasing the impact of the disability while increasing participation in the natural environment. But we weren't done, that's not the only vision. The other vision is to do that collaboratively through one system of support, okay? So what we're saying there is, now that we know where we really want our students to be, how are you gonna do that? We're gonna develop a system of support in which all our educators, all our administrators, everybody works collaboratively to, through one system of support, to meet the needs of all our students. We really do do that, it's time, though, to set it out there as a vision in which everybody can identify with. That really starts to mean that we don't want general education and Special Education to be seen as two split programs. Simultaneously, we wanna make sure we have the supports and services in there to offer a continuum of services for our Special Education students, if that makes sense. Again, reiterating that we have a strong foundation, so we really looked at the fact that we have this incredible foundation, we now have this vision. Well, the plan is, how do we get from our strong foundation to our vision? These 15 educators spent a lot of their time, energy through the leadership of Sharon Jones and working collaboratively to really identify three key areas to really get to that vision, parent participation and involvement. That takes an effort by all, you know, it takes an effort by parents who are very busy, especially parents with, students with special needs, it's pretty stressful, things you don't even think about, you know, it's hard enough to find a childcare, but when your child can't just have your typical childcare, how do we really work together to have our parents involved? The other thing we discovered that we really wanna focus on is, this is a district that's really focused on inclusion, and working collaboratively, and understand that collusion does collusion. Where did that come from? Inclusion doesn't necessarily mean one, one way to look at things, inclusion is actually a continuum of supports and services, right? So you have to have a continuum to ensure that students are included at the level in which is appropriate for them. So we identified parent involvement, we identified collu- collusion? Inclusion! Inclusion! And we also identified something that's very...
Maybe if you tweet it, it'll come up.
That's good, okay. We also identified multi-tiered systems of support, okay? Multi-tiered system of support is a way in which you look at things where you actually have interventions, and tiered interventions. These group of 15 educators are committed to working not just this year, but working in Special Task Force to bring both general educators, general educators, special educators together to continue this work, so we're really building this system. So I wanna thank everybody for the idea to bring in Sharon Jones. I look at Kim McCarthy, who's actually on the task force, the administrative team that came up with the idea to bring somebody in to help lead us to do this incredible work. That is your task force, it will result in a strategic plan that you will actually be able to see, it won't have the word collusion anywhere in it, I hope. And it's exciting stuff, so we wanted an opportunity to bring you this information. Again, you'll see the plan, it will be an ongoing effort, and it's really an opportunity to ensure that we just keep moving forward, and we move forward with a vision that helps us all to understand our roles and how we can all work together to achieve our goals. Questions?
How many years have we been keeping all our kids in the district, not going out of district? How many years would you... Is it just a good year that, that we're having, that we have all the kids in our district, stay in our district?
I can say that since I've been here for my six years, there has not been one child under the age of sixth grade that's been out since my arrival.
To be completely transparent, we, three out of the four elementary schools have all their students in their building. There are two students in one of our elementary schools that are not in their building, they're in another building in our district. And that happened many years ago, four years ago, five years ago, when we developed a brand-new program at Sunderland to start it up. So I'd say it was five years ago, when that program developed. But since that time of that initial cohort going over to start the new program in Sunderland, no student has been moved out of an elementary school.
I think that's...
So it's been five years since we've actually done that.
That is wonderful.
It's phenomenal.
I mean, other districts don't, don't have this.
And again, it's, it's the work of the people in the schools and the administrative team with its vision to continue to put the effort into that, and all of you.
Any other questions for Karen?
When do you think the strategic plan would be presented, and when would you foresee the specific implementation of that plan? Are you looking for like next year, September, or sometime thereafter?
Again, the strategic plan's really gonna identify our strengths and then our area of focus, it's going to really clearly identify what our vision is, and then it's gonna develop avenues, articulate avenues to get to that vision, and there's gonna be those three avenues. The written plan, and actually, Sharon and I were really going to do that over April break, that's like a week and a half away. So we're hoping to do that, but the task force asks for one more meeting together to really identify maybe what work we can start this summer, what we can start early, and develop a timeline for the work we wanna continue doing. So I'd say that the plan could be presented as early as May, in its written format, and I would anticipate that when we bring you the plan, it's gonna say something like, this is what we anticipate to achieve in one year, this is what we anticipate to achieve in three years, and this is what we anticipate to achieve in five years.
Any other questions for Karen?
Nope. Just like to say thank you, that was awesome.
Thank you, Karen.
Before we approve minutes, I should have done this at first, I mean, there's some new people at the table, start myself, we're gonna say who you are, where you're from, because I do recognize, don't recognize a couple faces here, so, I'm Bob Hall, a Chair of Frontier, and also the elementary.
Dave Sharp, Chair of Deerfield School Meeting?
Bob Hall, Chair of Frontier. Elizabeth Whiteman, Chair of Frontier.
Mary Raven, Deerfield, Chair of Frontier.
Phil McCann, Chair of Conway, and Frontier.
Tony Dean, Deerfield.
Damian Foswell, Frontier.
Doug Marra, Conway.
Blake Campbell, Chair of Conway.
Ivan Van Conway.
Edith Swigley.
Cory Nichols, Swigley.
Asher P. Onnick.
Doug Bolton, Chair of Sunderland.
I got you, Sunderland.
Peter Bigg, Eric, Sunderland.
Daisy Shaw, Sunderland.
Keith McFarland, Sunderland, and Frontier.
Bill Meyer, PC, Frontier.
Lynn Roberts, Frontier.
Judy Pierce, Frontier.
Cindy Womat, Frontier.
Yolanda Floska, Deerfield.
And everybody knows Patty and Lynn. I figured, I didn't recognize you over there, didn't recognize the other gentleman down here, so I didn't wanna put a face to a name, so... Next, we're gonna approve the minutes from...
I'm just telling Mary she can leave.
She's a baby.
Approve the minutes from October 5th for the, for Frontier, or, yeah, Frontier. People who are not here, Keith, Cindy, Bill, and Lynn. Any questions about the minutes? I have a motion.
Motion?
Second? I'll second it, I guess, I can be the chair, so... All in favor?
Okay, and for the Union 38 minutes?
Approving minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, so moved.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Uh, there were some people not here last time, but they didn't, they weren't the ones who just-
[inaudible]. And when I came to Conway last year, I really walked into the school committee committee and I told them that none of them could leave.
Oh, boy.
Ira, I present to you an award tonight for being a member of the school committee for the past several years. You're kind, you're honest, you're considerate, you're intelligent, you're supportive, but most importantly, you're in it for the kids. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and how much I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
Going to have a speech here. Speech? Speech? It's all about the kids. It's a privilege to do business. Thanks. Give me a-
Darius is out.
Yes, sir. Eric. Darius, Principal of Frontier Regional. Bill Meyer, PZ. I think we could get into a competition who has the largest heart and was about the students here at Frontier. And you'd be the winner, or you'd be in contention for winner for that. He brings his heart to every meeting and, and really, that's where he leads from. And I want to appreciate your three years of service here at Frontier and all the other side of the service as a school board member. He's involved with the school events, he's constantly talking amongst the community to support Frontier, and I just really want to thank him for all that he's done and I hope he continues to do outside of it.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Any other public comment out there? Okay, we're going to do some new business, presentation update, district wellness procedures. Oh, there's a few of you, I'm sorry.
And my colleague, Kristen.
I'm sorry.
Kristen Gordon, yeah. Well, thank you for having us here this evening. We're going to present the new wellness plan that we talked to you about at the last joint meeting. We have been working on this plan since September. The way that it evolved was in 2005, the federal government decided that all schools needed to have a wellness policy in place. And so at that time, Frontier complied with that regulation and put a policy together that was approved by this committee many years ago. There have been changes that have happened to that set of procedures throughout the years, and originally, the procedures and policies were all clumped together, and we had short-term goals, medium-term goals, and long-term goals. We decided that it was time to really dig into that policy again and to revamp it based on the current research. So we put together a very small committee, as we talked about last time. It was Kristen Gordon as an elementary principal representative, myself representing secondary, and Meg Birch, who isn't here this evening, who is representing the nurse leaders. And we put together a draft, which we then rolled out in late December, early January, to a much larger committee that included a health teacher from Frontier, an elementary PE teacher, a couple of parents, Mary DeLusa from the cafeteria. And then in addition to that, we also underwent a pretty extensive review process. The PE and health teacher, health department at Frontier looked at the plan, and we also rolled it out to some elementary folks as well, so that we could get as many voices represented in what we were writing as possible. So the wellness plan is right here. There are a number of changes, and Kristen's actually going to go over the goals that we went through, but just for example, mental health was not on the radar back when the original policy plan was developed, and so we've got a mental health section in here now. We also separated the policy from the plan, so that the last time, it was all one big document. This is actually the plan piece. There weren't many changes to the policy. Lynn will be taking that up with the policy committee, and I'm sure as one of your future meetings, you'll be approving the slightly changed policy. But there really wasn't a lot to be changed with the actual policy. It was really what we're, we're planning and putting forward.
So if you could turn your attention to page two where it says goals, I'm certainly not going to read those to you, but I just wanted to tell you the categories that we came up with in our, throughout the plan. The first three goals have to do with nutrition. The fourth goal has to do with nutrition education, which is obviously so important. Goals five through seven, physical activity. We want our kids moving as much as possible. Goal number eight, school-based wellness. Goal number, goals number nine and 10 are social, emotional, and mental health, and again, we thought that was a very important portion to put into the plan. Eleven is health education, and 12 is staff, staff wellness, as we know, the wellness is our, of our staff is hugely important to student achievement and student growth in all areas.
So I know that you'll all spend all evening reading this, before your bed, of course, but does anyone have any initial comments or questions about the plan?
I don't see anything here relative to bullying.
Right, so the district has a separate anti-bullying policy and procedure plan, which is separate from, great point, we want to make sure we cover it, but it's separate from-
I just want to make sure that-
Yeah.
It doesn't get overlooked.
Very comprehensive plan.
Well, I, I agree with that, but I just want to-
And it's also on page eight in here.
Yeah, it is in here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask about the Smart Snack nutrition standards and the effect on, like sporting, you know, like sports teams that, that do fundraising or food selling during their sporting events, not just football, but volleyball, basketball, that kind of thing? And then, like, how, is compliance, like, how do you gauge compliance with those standards? And how do you communicate those standards to people, to the, the kids and the parents that do that type of fundraising?
It, that's, it's an area that we're continuing, we continually work on. It's a challenge, because probably, there's not going to be a lot of sales in the salt-free pita chips. And so trying to find a balance between the products that are going to sell and the products that are really, truly healthy for you is something that we're continuing to work on, we continue to talk about. I don't think we're going to see an immediate elimination. We've come a long way. We used to have food snack tables outside of the cafeteria actually competing with the cafeteria sales, and it was not healthy at all. And so we've seen the elimination of that. We've seen some of the fundraisers move in the direction of healthier foods, but I don't think we're going to be in 100% compliance right away, because I think that until we can find something that's a viable fundraiser, that's going to work, that's also healthy, or a non-food item, you know, there, there's reality also that we have to consider, yeah.
We talked a lot about that, and we decided that it was very important to have it in the plan, to show that we support that, but yeah, to, it's really hard. I know in my city, the, the mayor was demanding that booster clubs, we'd still, we would sell dog bones and things like that. I remember having a conversation with him, saying, "Mayor, Mayor Roberto, with all due respect, I'm not going to get a lot of money for the Crocs Country team with dog bones." But it was a start. I thought about it before I planned a fundraiser. What's Mayor Roberto going to say? So if it's out there, maybe, maybe, maybe people start thinking about it more. That's our hope.
Is this going to be incorporated into, into like a separate class, like part of the curriculum? Are you teaching it?
It's, yes. So there is a, there's a pretty extensive health education piece in here, and that's something, we have four years of health here at Frontier, which is a lot more than a lot of other area schools. That's one area that you see cut over and over again. So we have two courses, seventh and eighth grade, and then also ninth and 10th, Health One and Health Two. And there are extensive nutrition sections incorporated into those courses.
I've, I've seen in, I don't know if we ever do it in this country, but I've seen in other countries where they, the kids actually get involved in the cooking process, and it's part of, I mean, like the lunch, and, and it's all, you know, part of, and here we have a problem, and it's getting better, but, you know, getting kids to eat our food in our cafeterias, but could it ever be, do you ever foresee, you know, a part of the curriculum where you could make lunch and get the kids involved in the actual cooking and serving?
Such a great idea. And we did talk about it. We talked about having cooking classes and various other things, so we have-
And I think Mary has been so open to new ideas that she's willing to try, you know, lots of different new innovative pieces like that.
I hope that's even less than the kitchen.
They, they can be, because we've had, we've had students from our life skills program actually go over and work in some of the cafeterias. So I think there probably are regulations around it, but I, we have to check that out, obviously, but I think there is a way to do it, yeah.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Review of the Frontier and Union 38 calendars.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um-
Hold on, hold on. Yes, Mr. Decker?
You want to talk about the calendar? I want to talk about that.
Okay, you want to listen to what they have to say, or do you want to wait for questions afterwards?
Wait.
Okay.
So we want to, so what we wanted to do is just present the calendar and just highlight some of the changes that are in the calendar to draw your attention to them. So one change that was made, we, we've heard a lot of different feedback over the years, and one challenge with elementary parent-teacher conferences was the amount of time that the conferences were spread out over. So one child in the classroom of 20 students might have their conference on the first day, and then a month later, the last child in the classroom is having a conference. And so we added in a half-day to try to consolidate those parent-teacher conferences so they would happen over a shorter period of time. We did reduce the number of early release days from 25 to 21 to compensate for the fact that we were adding a true half-day into the calendar.
And we had quite a winter this year, as I'm sure I don't have to tell you. So we have elected to eliminate early release in the months of January and February, so we will reduce the chance that we'll have an early release on the same week that we have a snow day. So that, other than that, there aren't any other significant changes to the calendar this year.
Hold on, Damian.
Mr. Decker, first.
My deals with the school committee conference, or, I mean, the school-
Calendar, okay.
The school committee calendar, that's all.
David?
Actually, one thing I do see is the start of school. Last year, we started school, uh, the Wednesday before. My knowledge correct on the teachers' union, we, is that the earliest we can start is Wednesday?
I think you're correct, due to the, the contract. And I think last year, we did it, and it seemed to work out.
I mean, is there any objection to that? And I kind of like the four-day weekend of Labor Day, and, I mean, I would even, I don't know if it takes a waiver or a letter of agreement with the union, or, you know, we started even earlier, say on Monday. I mean, school's getting later and later, and we get all, we get all these snow days, you know, so we're almost getting into July by the time we get out.
Yeah. I think it's a valid point, and I think it's a valid conversation to have. I think we reverted back, and, I don't know, Lynn, do you remember some of the conversations we had around that with?
Yeah, David, that's a good question to ask. What, what we were discussing was that parents and, and some school committee members were concerned that we would have school for two days and then have a four-day break, a four-day weekend, and that for people that have to procure daycare, it's very hard. They have to pay for the whole week to be able to have Friday. So they have a Monday, Tuesday, and then they come, the students come to school Tuesday and Wednesday, and then they have to go back to daycare on Friday. And so when we looked deeper into it, and we looked at the teachers, the CVA, the teachers' agreement, it says that the teachers do not, and this is both, not just Frontier, but Union 38, the teachers do not report to work before the last Wednesday in the month of August. So we follow, we decided to follow that protocol that's in the, the contract now, and at the same time, help the families that are looking for daycare and-
Yeah, I mean, I guess I still see it as a broken week, I mean, you still have to find, no camps are going on that week in August, so you gotta, you still gotta find-
Parents are still able, if they really want to, they can take their kids out, like, for the four-day weekend if they have plans or they have some plans.
Well, obviously, yeah. I was looking at it from a two-way street, trying to get done earlier in June.
So in other words, asking the teachers to come to school, to start on Tuesday and then have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yeah, or even start on Monday, so, so school starts on Tuesday. So then we get three, we actually, we get three, three school days in, we get Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, but then maybe the union would be open to it, since then they would still get a four-day weekend.
So what I would do in that sense is recommend to the unions, when they go to negotiate next year their new CVA, that that would be a discussion then.
Right.
Right now, we just want to follow the CVA.
Anybody else have a question about the calendars, about early release days?
One question. I have a question from November, am I reading this right? It's early release on Friday, half-day on Monday, full day off on Tuesday, and then back to school on Wednesday? So the kids would only be there for sort of that half-day on Monday, and then they'd be off for the rest of that time? Was there certain strategy there that you were thinking about?
I think, I think the only thing that came up, and maybe Lynn, you remember, could comment on this, but I think the motivation was to get the parent-teacher conferences clumped together. I think that, I think that was the motivation for it, but-
It just seems like a bit of a throwaway morning that-
Yeah.
Maybe there's another way to think about that.
Any other, Cindy, it's her.
It's just a comment that, thank you for January and February, and I totally support that, but then we have three snow days in March.
Yeah.
And March is like, yeah, March is like a calendar of red.
Yeah.
So just saying.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have one question, I have a question, sorry, about the calendar. With the early release, they get out at 1:30, was there ever any discussion about maybe having half-days? I know teachers said something about not having enough time to get everything done they want to get done. Is it working out with the 1:30?
I was going to ask that question, too, where we were pretty busy with the half-day thing, calendars and all that programming.
We did have half-days several years ago. We had half-days, and all of them were taken by parent-teacher conferences, because we didn't want to have so many in a month or a year. So we had pretty much one per month, and they were all for parent conferences, so we didn't have any of this time. So we tried to reduce the amount of release time and maintain having time for professional development. So that's, that was the challenge. When we used to have half-days, we had, we didn't have any left for professional development. So that, that is, yes, teachers would, would like to have three consecutive hours, but we would have to have them more frequently to have parent conferences and to have also parent professional development. I mean, if we had maybe less early release days and then, like, have some half-days-
I mean, if we had maybe less early release days and then like have some half-days...
Then that will be an expense for families because we cannot provide free childcare for a complete half-day.
Yeah.
So one of the considerations was, how can we manage this with the faculty we have without burdening families with the cost that they would have to go to the half-day of, of out-of-school time? And it's a wonderful program, but there is a cost associated. So we were trying to balance the needs of families to not have, incur that cost while trying to maintain as many school hours as possible, while trying to also ensure that we had enough time for parent conferences. So it was a, it was a balancing act in that way.
And not, and not to throw it in, but it's a loss of revenue if we don't serve lunch. That's a concern. We want to have as many lunch days as possible.
I would just add that if the teachers are asking for certain things, it might be good, I mean, that's something we really want to pay attention to, that they have, they're the sort of reason we were doing the early release, for the professional development. So if, if they are, it would be great, I'm sure you worked with them in thinking about this, but I think we want to make sure that we're listening to what they're bringing up.
Bob?
Question I have, we're going to continue to allow the children to stay at the school on early release days until 3 o'clock. That, that is not being eliminated, that's still going to be there.
That's still there, yes.
Who's the calendar? Frontier?
Second.
All Frontier, all in favor? So move. Move the calendar for Union Thirty-Eight?
Aye.
Chairman? Any other discussion? Voting members only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous?
Chairman?
Yes?
Let's talk about the school committee calendar.
Yes. Okay, can we, you want to start talking about it first, or you want to hear about it first?
I'll hear about it.
Okay, one, two, three.
Um, we can, so the school committee, the school committee calendar mirrors what we did this year, and if there's any questions or discussion on changing it, that's fine, we just need to agree.
Bob?
Well, the school committee conference starts the morning of the 7th of November. Frontier is going to meet till at least 9 o'clock that, the night before. And on the 7th, the Deerfield School Committee is scheduled to meet, and that's the first full day of the conference. So I would suggest, you can do what you want, is I think the Frontier meeting can either be moved to the, from the 6th to the 20th, or to the 13th, and, but the wait meeting be moved to the 20th. And Deerfield should be moved from the, the 7th to the 14th would probably work out.
I think that's what we did this year.
Right, we moved it.
I did, I think so, but I went back on my old, actual, the calendars I hang up in my office. I didn't see where that happened, but there, we've moved so many this year?
I know.
Because of snow and every other thing?
Well, I know, I went down the day before, and I typically don't miss a Frontier meeting.
So then that would, if we moved the Frontier from the 6th to the 13th in November, then that would mean that Sunderland would have to agree either to do it the Tuesday of Thanksgiving Week or the 27th.
I think we should move us, Frontier, to the 20th instead of screwing up Sunderland's. I mean, that's somebody else.
Just, just last year, we moved the Deerfield one to the, to the following week.
Okay, so, um...
We need more.
Yeah, we need a motion for Frontier, and then Ken needs to write down if there will be a motion for the Deerfield in November, and then if there's any other dates or months.
I can look at either the, either the 13th or the 20th, whatever the board wishes.
We want to move it.
20th.
Somebody's on the...
So, have a motion moving Frontier from the 6th to the 20th?
So administratively, is that, I mean, that, we meet jointly on the 4th of October. Now you're not seeing us again till the 20th of November. Is that a problem in terms of signing things, bills, warrants? Things that, that's a long time, six weeks?
Unless you change the rules. And then you're seeing us two weeks later.
Because there's nothing, I mean, Tuesday's not written in stone either, is it?
No, but we're going to go from the 20th to the 11th.
There isn't any reason we can't meet on the 12th, on a Monday.
I don't care.
That's funny.
It just seems to me like, to me, a lot of...
Make a motion.
The next one is a long...
Is that a holiday, though? Make a motion.
Then we're out four nights.
That's what you say?
November 11th. That just means we're out four nights that week, but no big deal, we suck it up.
You could ask Sunderland, they're waiting to come here.
Is that Monday?
11:11. Oh, yeah, the 12th would be Veterans Day.
It is.
If we observe Veterans Day, it would be the 12th.
On the 30th?
14 is open.
Well, no, he wants to move the 7th to the 14th. Didn't you say that, Bob? Yeah, but the 14th, take it.
Well, that's Deerfield is going to move it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're hoping to.
Not if we go first.
Yeah, you are, you are, your motion's on the table, so.
Why, again, is the desire to move Frontier from the 6th?
So Bob can go to the...
What is, what is that? What does that do with the conference?
Conference starts at 10 o'clock this morning.
It's two hours away.
What airplane are you driving?
You might just have to tough it out, such a...
Or not come, Bob.
Hey, whatever you want, I don't care. I'm just saying that...
It seems like it's tough trying to find a date for one person.
Well, we typically meet on the second Tuesday of the month, and this, for some reason, it, it has moved, been moved around.
Because of, I think because of the Thanksgiving holiday being in that week for Sunderland.
We moved everybody up a week.
We moved everyone. We moved both Sunderland and Conway up a week.
Would, would the Sunderland committee entertain having their meeting here at Frontier on the 13th at 6:00, starting the Frontier meeting here on the 13th at 7:00?
Or backing up, why don't we just have it on the 8th instead of the 6th?
You can't possess...
You're still the cake? When do you come back?
Six weeks later.
We're going to miss you, Bob.
We're going to, we're going to leave Frontier alone.
Well, we have a motion. We're going to take your motion back.
You're going to take your motion off the table, sir? Give her a second.
I think it was.
Yeah.
I would drop a motion.
We have a question, over.
I'm getting my overdriver to bring me down.
Okay.
Uh, swing, Sunderland to the 6th and Frontier to the 13th.
13.
No one from Sunderland going down to the, leaving Tuesday night to go to the MEIC? Either that or they can drive the next day, they seem to be doing so.
They're more youthful.
Oh, they have the...
They're more youthful.
Hey, Bob?
We have the conference of the regional schools meeting, and early on, Wednesday morning.
I get it, I get it.
I make a motion that we flip the 6th and the 13th, so that Frontier meets on the 13th and Sunderland meets on the 6th.
Second. Any other mo, any other talk from Frontier? Of course, as long as Sunderland doesn't mind.
I know.
Any questions from Sunderland people? If we flip, flop it, Sunderland people?
As long as Bob brings us, you know, donuts or something that night, then we'll, we'll be available.
Okay.
I'll bring a 6-pack.
All in favor of Frontier? So move. I need a motion from the union.
Make a motion to move Deerfield's meeting from the 7th to the 14th?
Well, no, so we can leave Deerfield unless you don't mind, you don't mind driving. No, it's, I mean, no...
Oh, you mean, this is for the...
We need to move Sunderland, got your 13th to the 6th.
But you can make the motion.
I'll make the motion to move it. I'll second it for Sunderland people. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We're unanimous again. Thank you.
Trevor's got to move the...
Yeah.
Trevor. Finally, I'll make a motion to move the 7th, Deerfield from the 7th to the 14th.
Okay. I'll, I'll second. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Right. Opposed? Abstentions? We're clear. Unanimous again. Thank you. Now we need a motion to accept the calendar as is from Frontier? As amended.
So moved.
As amended, sorry.
So moved, as amended.
Second.
Any other questions from Frontier on the calendar? All in favor? Opposed? Stained? A motion to approve the union calendar as amended?
So moved.
Seconded? People are already voting, I guess. Trevor and David, okay. All in favor, yes. Opposed, abstentions, we're unanimous again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Can we revisit that? Don't shake your head, no. Just because of Frontier, if you remember, we need to pass the budget by the 11th of March, is that correct? Remember, we got into that little thing this year, and we're meeting on the 12th? So if we were to move our meeting to the 5th right now of March, we wouldn't get into that quandary come January of next year like we did this year?
It's a good catch.
Yeah.
Very good catch.
I apologize for not catching it earlier. So I'd like to make a motion to move March's 12th, the date of the 12th of March, to the 5th of March for Frontier.
Second.
Any discussion from Frontier people? All in favor?
Thank you.
Just accept that. Thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have, we have a few policies that we've been working on, and everybody had a chance for a first reading. We've been having lots of fun, cookies and donuts, you know. There's a, there's a, I just want to let everybody know, there's a lot more coming. I'm not sure how you want to vote, you want to vote individual or individual? But there's no voting.
Since you're voting the individual...
And the voting individual? So, we're going to, Lynn's going to, we're going to, we can talk about individual ones in a group, and then we go back to our regular meetings and we'll vote for them at our own, our meetings tonight.
Sit down, please.
We're going to talk about the policies here, and when we break away, we'll have, we'll go down to our individual meetings.
So you have to make a declaration that wasn't reasonably anticipated, we're going to talk to all these in this Union Thirty-Eight, just to cover us.
Well, it says policy, second reading, discussion, various policy changes, which is number D and number five. D and five.
Oh, all right. We're fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you, bud.
I just want to make sure we didn't...
So the committee's been, actually, we've been working really hard, and the committee members are Phil Cantor is the chair of the committee, Bob Decker, Mary Raven...
No, I'm not on it.
Oops, excuse me, Bob Holla, Mary Raven, and Bill Marapiezy, and Greg Gottschar. So we have had some very rich conversations. The question I have for you right now is, when you looked at these, they were presented last month, and you had a, kind of a month to read them, are there any questions on any specific one? Or I could just go through them and, you know, I don't know how many of you have copies of them?
Have you all read them?
I've looked for it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on any particular ones? Cindy, you have any particular one?
Just the, the whole issue of the longevity, I was just trying to find it. And my concern was that the longevity, while it's extended for several years, and do you know what, what one that is, by the way? The longevity one? What policy it is?
It's not, it's actually in GB, in GB 1. And these are the Union Thirty-Eight and the Frontier Regionals policies and procedures. And they were, one was adopted or amended in May 12, 15, and the other one was December 14. The only thing in these two policies that we're looking at now is just increasing the longevity to begin not FY '19, but FY '20, because our budget for FY '19 is set. The impact for the first year looks to be about $4,500, and that's across the districts. So central office would be $1,000. People, we have three people moving from $750 longevity to 12, 1,250, and these are 32 years, 27 years, and 25. Conway, two people at 17 and one at 16, moving from 250 to 500, for a total of 750. And those will stay in place for five years. Deerfield, one person, 21, goes from 250 to 750, and that's $500. Waitley, 29 years and 19 years, 250 to 1,000, and 250 to 500. So that would be $1,000. And then Frontier Regional, 43 years, 29 years, 26 years. They're all getting 750, and they will move to 15, the 43-year-old person will move to 1,500, the 43-year service years. The, the other two will move from 750 to 1,000, for a total of $1,250 at Frontier. All told, the district will pay about $4,500. What we have done is move from, we had 10, 15, and 20 years. People at 20 were stuck at 750 for the eternity of their service to the district. We, the policy committee voted, recommended to add 25 years, 30 years, and 40 years. 10 years is 250, 15 years is 500, 20 years is 750. The new ones, 25 years, 1,000, 30 years, 1,250, and 40 years, 1,500.
So, of the new steps, on the new steps here, there's only one, two, three, four, five people out of all this. Some of the, some of the people that Lynn talked about were on a regular step program for the total of $4,500. Phil, you want to go first?
Well, I just wanted to add that this was the one policy revision, that there was not unanimous support within the committee on, but there was a unanimous vote to bring this forward, and that, 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 that when there's a desire to give, or to specifically reward, I mean, the genesis of this is that there was a desire to reward excellent service in one employee in particular. And the feeling was that this was sort of the only way that we can really go about doing it, is to float all boats similarly situated, which, and, but, but when you look at, when we did a survey on what other schools were doing, and what all of our neighboring schools were doing, the increases are much more in line with what the neighboring similarly situated schools are doing than what we, currently, we are, when you look at that from that comparison, we are low. But the, the, and, and the other, the other drawback to that is that when you put budgetary requirements in policies, they're sort of below the surface level, and they're on, they're basically, it's difficult to ever do anything about them in the normal budgetary context every year. And so that, you know, God forbid, if we are ever in this situation where every $1,000 really, really matters, like, like, or, you know, do you have to fire a teacher, or like, you know, whatever, then, then this is something that theoretically would be better positioned, maybe if it was in a position where we could do something more with it in a budgetary context than we're not really going to be able to. But, so those, those were kind of like all the arguments pro and con, like, but this would bring us just normal to where everybody else is. And in context of the other benefits issues, that's, that's kind of where we were headed to, is trying to just be more normal. There's a few, take out our, our low outlier and take out our high outlier and make us more normal.
I have a hard, a hard time with this because we, we don't reward our general town employees with this large of the longevity. So the schools take a huge part of our budget every year, and it's very tough. We try to play, be fair to our employees all across the district, all, you know, all departments of town, and, not that I don't reward excellence and longevity, and I get all of it, but we are struggling to... struggling to find every penny to fund education for one. And then, you know, just adding this on, on top of it when it doesn't compare with the person who's worked at the Highway Garage for 30 years. They don't get $1,500 longevity. So it's hard to, I have a hard time not being equal across all boards when education takes so much of the town dollars as it is already. It's hard to be, just, I have a hard time not having it kind of as parallel. And I know it might be parallel between different educational facilities, but between town employees, it's very tough.
In the county of Deerfield, right? Where do you, where does your steps end? At what, at what step?
We have 10 steps.
10 steps?
10 steps. We just redid our classification study. It is, you typically would like to bring them in at step one or two, depending on their experience, and then each year as they gain access, they get up to step 10. After that, they'll stop going up steps. We'll do a COLA, depending on the year. This year, we did a 2% COLA, which was hard for a lot of people to take in town, because it was a tough vote. And again, so it's a lot of money, if you move a step and then a 2% COLA. But people, when they get to the top, they don't move a step every year. They get a longevity, or if there's a COLA, they get a COLA. So, but the longevities are more in the 500 range, maybe 1,000.
Is that, so step 10 in Deerfield, how many years do you usually have in at step 10? Is it 20 years for step 10?
It could be, yeah. I mean, unless you adjust the classification schedule and they drop back down as a couple of steps, but pretty soon they're back at 10 again. So I'd probably just want to compare it a little bit more.
Phil?
I had a three-year ongoing battle, and I agree with you completely, because as an employee from the town of Waitley, I had been there near to 30 years.
Yep.
And people were getting, and the schools were getting, I was getting nothing.
Right.
Because none of the town employees in Way, they get anything. Now they get $250, no matter how long they've been there. But it was, it was a three-year struggle with them, with the town, town fathers to find the money to pay for employees. And you've had guys, and I, I was the newbie among the group. At that time, I had 25-year service, because the guys in the Highway Department had more than I did. And none of them had ever gotten anything. And there's, there's some pretty big numbers in here, and I would guarantee you, they'll be hollering in Waitley.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm retired now, but that doesn't mean I can't holler.
That's right.
And you're not afraid to.
And it doesn't take effect, take away the appreciation we have for that service.
Exactly.
And wanting to, I'd love to give it.
And I never, I told them to the side one a hundred times, and I'll tell it to them again, I'm not advocating they take the longevity away from the teachers.
No.
I'm advocating that there be equity for everybody who work, who work for the same entity.
Yes.
Our pay was printed by the same, same bank, and cussed with the same amount of money. We all work for the same entity, but we don't have the same benefits.
Right.
We model appropriate behavior by setting the tone here, or how you should treat your long-term employees, and maybe the town will follow.
The problem is finding the money.
Right.
That's the hard part.
Right. But, you know, you also...
And because it's 70% of our town budget is education, 70%, it's a huge chunk. We have no money left for Highway Department, Police Department, all of that. I mean, just the increase this year alone, and what we can raise in taxes is getting eaten up by education. So it's far, it's just, I agree with, I want a reward. I would love to. I don't know where to find the money, the problem.
Well, my concern is, what particular employees qualify? Only those that are, that will employees, non-contracted, and non-union, correct?
This is non-union, yes. So custodians, secretaries, patetarians.
But it would not apply to IAs or teachers, because they're covered under collective argument. And it wouldn't apply to other staff, you know, and higher principals would apply.
No, no, they have their own contracts.
Okay. I just want to clarify that the only people that are included here are the basically declared former janitorial. Handicapped here.
Cindy?
When I brought this up last month, my concern was that we should never make a policy based on a person. We should make a policy based on percents, and how many people are going to get to 40 years of employment somewhere. Did you say that how many years, and you now get 500?
In Waitley?
Yeah.
Two, everybody gets 250.
250.
Doesn't matter if they've been there for 10 years or 110.
Well, my original thing was to say that I thought we should raise the 10-year up to 500, and just get rid of all the other ones, and leave it at 500. But I do believe that to be true to our constituents and in our selectmen, maybe we should follow that model. And yes, encourage them to come up a little bit. I mean, I don't know how many years it's been like that. This seems that it was approved in 2014, so I'm going to assume that it wasn't, you know, 30 years ago. But I do believe that in this case, all employees should be treated equally. You know, what is equitable? The town people work just as hard as, school and school work just as hard as the town. So I just think that all these steps, it's, it's, we're, we're targeting people, and we shouldn't be doing that. That was my original thought.
Just briefly, I was part of some of the back and forth to tend to, maybe an additional perspective. Some of the reasons why you would have steps is because turnover is expensive. And someone who's been around for three years, maybe is, knows their way around a little bit better than someone who's just hired, but not as well as someone who's been here for sixth or seventh grade or nine years. That argument does start to kind of fall off. As someone who's been in a position for 35 years, necessarily more valuable to the community than someone who's been here 10, it's something for the committees to talk about. To what extent does the step level represent value, and your desire to retain people, or to what extent is it just kind of status that the people are going back and forth?
And I don't either about what the situation is in the other towns. Way, it doesn't have steps here. So you get the COLA that the Finance Committee decides to give you, if they decide to give you one. That's that. There are no steps. There's no place to go in Way. So the employees are particularly sensitive to things like this, because they have, there's nothing else. I don't know how Way's and Sunday was in town, but whoever knows, the steps in Deerfield, but I don't know how the other ones are set up. Way isn't that set up.
Does anybody else have any questions about the longevity that we're talking about?
I guess my, my question to the Superintendent would be, as, as we discussed, Policy GB in our various school committee meetings after this, if one town decides to support the new longevity and another town doesn't, what does that do to the Union 38 personal policies or procedures? Does it have to be unanimous across the towns, or does it have to be individually voted each town?
Uh, definitely each town. But with Frontier, it would have to be the Frontier Committee voting that. Yeah, it would probably have to be each town, because it will be on each town's budget. So it would be up to the Union 38 towns.
So have the potential...
I don't think that that's, that's not, there's, that's not an answer with a degree of certainty. That's, that's an open question.
So you should re-table it and get more information before we make a decision.
I think we can certainly make that motion in our committee meetings to table, so that we have clarification as, as we continue the discussion, because...
That's right. As being one of the members of this, this committee, and there was some sensitivity here, what we tried to do, looking at GB and GB1, was try to look at the differences between the two, and there was differences. If everybody has seen it or not, if you haven't, you got to look at it. There's quite a bit of differences between one and the other one. Some are better here, some are better over here. And we talked about this particular thing, trying to pass this one, and then to have another subcommittee just to talk about GB and GB1, try to bring it together as one, and still keep it as two, but have it all the same language. So when you look at vacation time, sick time, you know, who gets 10 days a year? This classification of people, this one gets 15, this one gets 20. How many can you save? How many you can, how about the buybacks? You know, it's, you know, if we talk about buybacks for, we're talking...
No, I didn't mean to set you off. I just wanted to be recognized afterwards. So just so you know, I'm going to make a motion that we table GB and GB1 at Frontier.
Seconded.
Until, no, we can't do it now. Don't we have to vote on that later?
Do it in the meeting.
But, so everybody else knows upfront, transparent, that I just think that maybe we should align this a little bit more.
And, and we discussed, that's what I was trying to say. We, we did discuss, you know, if, if things didn't pass, or if this one passed, then we were going to have a subcommittee just on needs, to try to bring everything together uniform between the two of them. Because there's some good on the Union 38, and there's some good on Frontier 1, and we talked, we, we saw the differences and stuff, so.
So to, to be clear, GB1 is the Frontier, non-union, and GB is the Union 38, non-union. Union 38, non-union, GB, they have 10 years, 250, that's it. The other, the Frontier has 10, 15, and 20 years, going up to 250 increments, 250, 500, 750. And we wanted to add them for vote.
And we could, and we can, you know, if we take, if all the committees table it, and we have another subcommittee to talk about just these two, then we can, like I said, we could try to get it more in the line, and then we either bring it forward this year or be something for next year. But, Phil?
So the, you should, GB and GB1 have taken up the majority of our time so far as a committee. And we tried to look at them sort of holistically, that it's not just the, it's also the sick pay and the vacation pay. And what we really tried to look at was, was the one thing that upsets town halls and the taxpayers at town meeting the most, which is line items on our budget for $40,000 for retirement, and they find out there's one employee that retired. And, and you, you will recall that before we hired Superintendent, we addressed this, before we hired Dr. Carey, we addressed, we addressed this sick pay issue, and specifically the ability to cash out your sick pay, your unused sick pay at the end. And, and just totally separate from vacation pay, the sick pay traditionally is not a cash benefit. It's a form of, whatever, whatever else it is, it's not, and, and there's a lot of nuance in all of that. But the, when we looked at the policies that other schools have for all their employees, most didn't have any ability to get cash for sick pay at all. And so we looked at it from, we have a, depending on whether it's Union 38, or whether it's Frontier, it's either one and a half days per year of accumulated service you can cash out when you left, or two days of, per year of accumulated service that you can cash out when you left, when you leave, with no cap, with no upper cap. So that you, we have, you know, non-union, whatever, custodial, whatever you want to call it, but the positions that are, when, when, when they cash out 30 or 40 years of sick, it's big numbers. And so when, when we did talk about this in at least one of the Union negotiations that I was at three years ago, the last contract time, the, the response was, well, look, you give this benefit to all of your administrators, and you give this benefit to your non-union people. How could you talk about taking this benefit away from us first? And I thought that was a very coherent response. And it made, you know, and so the, the first thing that we did, and we've been on this sort of journey now, we've, we've worked with the, the administrators now that have been hired since that time, do not have the ability to cash out the sick pay like, and this is the attempt to take it, to take that premise to the non-union personnel. And the reason that, even though we, we knew that there was a need to, like, have a special subcommittee on this stuff, but the, the more we wait, I mean, every single, this really applies to new employees, we would hope. I mean, that's the purpose of this, is to apply to new employees. And in this category of employees, we hire every month. So when, the longer we wait, the more it gets baked into the system, our inability to change it. So, so the longevity, the giving in the longevity was sort of to be balanced against the taking in the sick pay. Even though they're not directly comparable, it's sort of they are, a little bit. And, does this make sense to anybody?
Nope.
No?
I understand where you're coming from, Phil. You're trying to have one washed to eat?
We just want to review it.
So...
And I think it's worthy of reviewing. Even though I'm not saying you didn't do a great job.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go out a little bit, but I'll go out a little bit on the limb and say that I think we've got a pretty good grasp that GB and GB1 probably need to be tabled for further discussion. Are there any other policies before we break? Because we're at 7:30, we were all scheduled to be into our meetings by 7:00, and I, I know we have, what's that?
4:45.
Yeah, I know we do. So I'd like to keep the meeting moving along on the agenda. Are there any other policy questions that people had? These are great questions, but go ahead, Trevor.
One question on authorized signatures. One thing that came up in town was Barbara was asking me if we, in town, if, say, selectmen can make a signature and then bring it back to, to discussion later at a meeting for warrants. And we did that at the collaborative as well. We had a committee to come together, and so a few people could sign and then bring it back. The issue came up when we had, we bumped the Deerfield School Committee meeting, I think, three times in a row, and it was like six weeks before we could sign warrants. So I was wondering, I didn't fully read this, and I apologize, but I wondered if that addressed Section DGA, did it, it said authorized signatures. Was that in there to, to, you know, so a committee could vote the Chair to sign in absence of, you know, all of us coming together at a meeting? Does that sound familiar, Patty, at all?
So what we wrote was, the Chair of the School Committee, of Union 38 School Committees, or designees, will sign warrants presented for approval.
Great.
And then Frontier's, says the Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer authorized to sign check with files.
Perfect. I think, so that'll address, I think, what we had for an issue in town.
You don't have any warrants in Union 38 to sign.
We have, we're presented with warrants at every School Committee meeting.
No, 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 Union 38.
Well, it says Union 38 Schools.
Union 38 Schools.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any other policy questions? Because I think we need to get moving along here, so.
Next Superintendent's report?
What I have given you is my, my computer, whatever, the network would not print my Superintendent's report. So what I wanted to speak about tonight very quickly is, tomorrow, we're going to, Keith McFarland and myself, we're going to Senator, Representative Stephen Kulick's office with attendees from Athol Royalston, Amherst Pelham, Gateway Regional, Gilmontague Regional, Hampshire Regional, and Mohawk, to discuss how we can go about trying to get our regional transportation fund 100% funded the way the law states it. Right now, we're at 70 to 80%?
If that.
If that. And so we really want to advocate for that. This is the reasoning why we're going. I won't go into it all, but it talks about why transportation is a focus, why we really would like to have 100% reimbursement in the FY '19 budget. And there was some, there was a study done, there was a, a report done that we all received, and this is what is leading us to go there and ask. Two Saturday's ago, I attended the Sustainable Rural Schools, and, but there were a lot of town people there too, because they have a big part and a big investment in our schools' budget. So we met in, at Greenfield Community College for about three hours, and to discuss, and to listen to presentations about what we can do together, the rural schools, and the, especially folks in Frontier, Franklin County, to what we can do together to move our needs, or our, to advocate for some kind of relief for our rural students and our budgets. And that was quite interesting, more to come on that, the Sustainable Rural Schools. Next Tuesday, I'm going to Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools for the... Next Tuesday, I'm going to Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools for their general meeting, to talk about, again, where we're moving on with the rural schools, and what we can do together as a portion of the state that is not really receiving the funding we need for our rural schools. And that's what I have. If you have any questions, if there's any questions about that meeting at Greenfield Community College.
It was a great meeting. There was, there was.
You know, Representative Paul Mark had hosted it, the Heart Foundation was there, and they were doing a lot of advocacy. They were looking at Chapter 70 funding, and the makeup of that Chapter 70 funding, and how some, you know, some towns can certainly pay their fair share, they can pay all their education, there's no need for state funding, like Wellesley or something like that, can pay it five times over, but still get a percentage, they have a 15% cap, so the state will pay them 15% of their needs anyways, even though they don't need it. So, we're, I think there's going to be a group together looking at that Chapter 70 funding and that cap, because there is a fear Deerfield would be on the opposite side of that, and we could lose, even though, you know, we're not a very wealthy community, but we do, I think we, we do over, you know, we overpay, and we don't get enough money back. But, but there's a risk that we, if they redo that and pull that money away from some of the wealthy towns, and it's based on income, and it's based on zip code, so, we could, we could lose some money. So, it's important to study that, and this all came with a band.
Yeah. Background music.
Background music for my comments.
So, we're trying to, these coalitions are trying to attack it two ways, through the regional transportation, and as well as the Chapter 70. We only receive $20 a student this year, increase in our Chapter 70?
Not enough.
It's just not enough. And, so, we really are, there's a group that's working with it, and this district, our Union 38 schools and our regional school are working on it as well.
I think we all have to move on.
I just want to make you aware of the fact that some of us that are here tonight attended the reception for the incoming Master of Education. And, he strikes me as a fellow that's more hands-on, pious person, and that you can probably relate to him, more so than, you know, some of those people that typically held those jobs. There's others here that may want to add more info than I do. Did anybody talk to him about charter schools, or anything like that?
I spoke to him about inequity of funding between school choice and charter. And, he really wasn't aware of it. He comes from Charlestown, where he's a principal, and then Lawrence, where he's a superintendent. So, he seemed willing to learn, but the main driving, what I tried to make to him, that there's complete inequity between those funding sources. And I wasn't trying to attack charter schools at all, and I was trying to take any money for them, I was saying, school choice should actually match that, rather than just the $5,000. And then, at this meeting tomorrow, agenda Part C, other advocacy ideas, I'm going to bring up that idea as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
No. I thought it was a nice presentation he made, he talked for quite a while. He's currently the administrator of the Lawrence High, Lawrence School System. He was put in because Lawrence had failed.
Right.
And he's the caretaker, much like Hoyok has a caretaker.
I see her.
Whatever you want to call him.
Yep.
Same thing. But he lets his school participate.
So.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we'll be going into executive session. So, everybody that's, that's not a school committee member, has to leave for a little period of time.
Why don't we?
Take a five-second break.
There's enough people here that maybe we, I don't know if people want it, we could go to that room? Is there enough room in there?
Why do people need to hang around?
That's a question I can't.
There's, when we go back into open session, we have people here that want to talk to us at Frontier Regional, we'll be breaking apart.
And you have to have your school committee meeting after.
So, if everybody except for school committee members can.
Temporarily.
Temporarily go outside, we'll come get you when the meeting comes back, and open session.
I love inviting you in. We need to go.
Executive session, only voting members?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Motion, everyone can go to executive session.
I need to meet with school committee members.
Move it. You need to declare. Order. Is everybody here?
No.
At 8:43, please. I'd like to review the minutes from March 6th. I'll keep minutes. March 6th, do I have anybody want to talk about March 6th?
Second.
I gotta look and see where they are, who wasn't here. Mr. Decker, or Mr. Bill, who wasn't here?
I think we should wait for the super.
Oh.
So, somebody can take notes?
Well, I am, I was going to take notes, because if you had a question.
No, no, I just wanted to set the other districts up.
So, Mary, Mary made the motion to accept the minutes, and I seconded them. I have to go to the other. Is that right, Mary?
Any other?
Do you want me to start now?
Any other questions about the minutes? All in favor, except for Bob and?
Yeah.
Bill?
I'm, I'm abstaining.
Phil Marapizzi.
I thought I was there.
I can't find Kelly's folder.
Everybody but Bill. No, it's in the box.
Here you go. Okay, so, tonight you signed 25 warrants totaling $1,488.79. Thank you for that. What's coming around is our, where we stand right now with our school lunch program. We are up 6,129 meals from this time last year. Our participation's up from 39% to 46%. Our meals per service hour went from 6.6 in June to 10.2 in February. We are still operating at a loss, because we had the one-time consultant come in, but if we were to remove that, this time last year, we had a $34,000 deficit. If we removed the one-time cost, we would have a deficit of $1,416. So, we are on track, moving in the right direction.
This does not reflect any group insurance costs, will you?
No, Bob, it does not, it's just that.
So, you know, we have a cost accounting system, we ought to be able to track all of our costs.
We don't charge by department health insurance costs. We, I don't, there's no utilities here.
Well, maybe we should that, have that costed in, too.
And, and then, maybe we need to hire an accountant, who can do that.
Well, we have an account.
No, we don't.
Where's the rest of the consultant fee located at?
It's on the bottom, the $50,516.
Right, where's the other 25?
That's it, that was, that was Frontier's share.
Oh, so the consultant fee got pawned off on the other schools, too?
No, the schools that shared the food service director who was here previously. Didn't get pawned off on anyone, it was, that was their agreement.
So, Sunderland and Deerfield and Frontier paid?
Sunderland, Waitley.
All of them.
And Frontier paid.
Not Conway.
Right.
I thought Conway adopted it.
They were. They're sharing in the new food service director, they did not share in the old food service director.
Thank you.
But, they shared in the person that developed the plan going forward, so they should have shared in some of the costs.
You don't know what you're talking about sometimes, seriously.
No, I'm serious.
Florrie didn't work in Conway, why would I charge Conway for, Florrie didn't go there?
They bought into the program she designed.
And now they're paying. And now they're paying. And now they're paying.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yes.
What would you like?
Not on this, but I have a question on the financial statements. There is a charge there for retirement. We have a negative figure under the, the expense retirement, a negative figure of $25,000 for carrying.
Correct, and I've reported that every month since September, that we had to stop charging it on the grant, it's been on the various reports that Mr. Marapizzi's asked me to have every month.
But, this is just a straight, even dollar that, $25,000?
The grants used to carry $25,000 of our Franklin County retirement assessment. They, we can no longer do that, the federal law does not allow us to do that.
All right, it's not, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Public comment?
Hi. In case I have a question.
Sure. Yeah, just give it to him, and we'll pass it around, okay?
So, my name's Paul DiMarco, resident in the towns of Schutzburg. One of the things we wanted to talk to, and we're open to address to full committee topics, we have Union 38 teachers here, as well as Frontier teachers and other educators, is that the Union is sponsoring a showing of a movie called Backpack Full of Cash, May 2nd, the Academy Theater, Academy Music in Northampton. It's about how charter schools are bankrupting part public schools, and taking the money and creating a two-tiered system of education. But, the main thing I came here to talk to you about tonight is, I shouldn't keep a copy for myself, but, yes, please, thank you. So, I'm handing out a spreadsheet with more numbers, I know you guys are just looking at numbers, I'm sure you look at a lot of numbers, but what, I'll wait till these get So, I assume everybody here is aware that the Hampshire County Repruciating Health Insurance Trust is changing its plan design, and by that I mean they're raising co-pays and deductibles this year. And, we've just gotten the most recent financial report from the Hampshire County Trust as of February. And, the trust, if you look at the, actually, if you look at five lines down, it says "Add From General" on the right-hand side, the little note there. Sorry, I didn't write these, this was one of the trust members I got this from, and they had been written notes on it already. You'll see it's an even million-dollar figure. The trust was able to take a million dollars out of its operating revenues and put it into its stock portfolio over the past year, because it's actually shown 1.5 million dollars in operational profits this year. It's gained 1.5 million dollars from the revenues it brings in over the expenses it's been paying out. And if you look at the bottom line on this sheet, you'll see last, from last February to this March, the trust, well, I've got it backwards, but it's 26 million and some odd dollars on the February bottom line, to 30 million, 30 million and some odd dollars, sorry, I'm not looking at it. The trust, that's the trust net assets, have grown by 3.5 million dollars over the past 12 months. So, we didn't come to you with this before, because we didn't have this information before. But, if you look on the next page, you'll see the, this information summarized. This information was put together by our, we have, Massachusetts Teachers Association has a healthcare consulting firm that we work with called Boston Benefit Partners, and they put together this, this page, which shows that the trust had 1.5 million dollars in its operating revenues increase, and showed a basically 129 million, 129,000 dollar profit on a monthly basis, average monthly basis, and each one of those is the monthly profit or loss of the trust. And profit and loss is not a technically accurate statement, the trust is a nonprofit, but it's the easiest way to describe it. So, if you look at the bottom, there's the total reserves again. The 30, it's up to 30, 30,101,46. This means that the trust is funded with reserves as a percentage of annual expenses at 46.8%. In other words, it's got 50% revenues. If the trust, if every town, school that was part of the trust right now went bankrupt and told the trust, "We're not giving you another dime," the trust wouldn't have any insurance anymore, but they would have what they call IBRs. It used to take three months for medical bills to come into the trust, and they'd have to plan, make sure they have at least three months of reserves in order to pay the bills. Now that everything's electronic reporting, it's a lot shorter than that, but, we wouldn't recommend the trust have anything less than three months on hand, because it's got to be safe. In fact, I think three months is too little. But, right now, the trust is close to six months on hand. That 46% of years. So, on the next page is just a smaller spreadsheet, comparing the percentage of the trust, the trust revenues, trust assets now as, which is the 46.8% that I showed you before. And the thing I didn't, should have pointed out earlier, is the cost of these plan design changes, the increases in co-pays and deductibles, are a way to shift the cost onto the people who are the insured. And that, overall, the trust is saving a million dollars from that plan design change. It's not a million dollars for Frontier, or for Union 38, it's altogether, it's a million dollars. So, if you look at what would happen if the trust did not pass that cost on right now, they would still have, they would go from 46.8% rainy day funds to 45.2% of rainy day funds. They'd be still overfunded. Joe Shea, who's the director of the trust, has said it several meetings, in fact, he said it two weeks ago when I was in Belchertown, the trust is overfunded. I understand he wants to keep the trust flying at a level playing field, and we don't want to see the trust go bankrupt. We saw Amherst being poorly mismanaged just recently. But, right now, if the trust is making a million and a half in profits over the past year, it doesn't need to throw a million dollars in costs on the people, it can afford that. So, what we're asking is that the Frontier School Committee and you as residents of your towns, support that your towns and the Frontier School Committee representatives, please vote at the next trust meeting, which is on April 12th, to suspend the rules, it's going to be run by Robert's rules, you guys must be somewhat familiar with that, with the committees, to suspend the rules to allow for reconsideration of this proposal to jack up the co-pays and deductibles. If, if only just to allow the debate to happen on the floor. We know there's, I know there's several towns and communities that are in support of reconsidering and not doing this. Joe Shea will certainly be there, he can present the numbers, he's the master of numbers, far better than I am. But, we'd like to at least bring it to debate. And, I know you guys can instruct Patty, but if you could also talk to your select boards, I think you have some waiting in your towns to listen to you. If we could get just at least the debate on the floor, there's still time for the trust not to do this. In fact, it's easier for the trust, for it not to happen, is those people who've been in negotiation, the one IAC meeting we've had so far, pre-negotiations, you guys won't have to come anymore, you won't have to deal with me. Make my life easier, anyways. But, really, it will save, the members will tell you the impact on them, and their families, and their coworkers that these changes are going to have. But, it'll also save Frontier money, because right now, you have to pay an additional 25, you have to add an additional 25%, at least, under the law, to what your premium payments are, as a result of the negotiations with the unions. So, you'll save 25% on your healthcare premiums by, if this is overturned. So, we're asking that you instruct your representatives to the trust to please allow the debate, and if it makes sense, support not passing on the premiums issue. So, I'd like, I know it took a long time, and I'm sorry, but it was a kind of complicated stance to explain, but, these guys are here, they're the ones who are directly affected, and some of them are likely to tell you how it's going to affect them and their members. All right, over.
Hi.
Mr. Bill?
Yeah, I am.
Hold on.
I am on the Insurance Advisory Committee with the Town of Waitley, I'm the retired employees representative, and we've had two meetings so far on this very issue, and we met yesterday at, yesterday at, and the representative of the teachers' union, representing teachers that was there, the Town of Waitley, we have a tentative agreement to go with the changes that have been, the selectmen voted to accept the changes of the GIC that trusted Waitley. And, the units that were in that meeting, I was representing the retirees, and the teachers, Emily was representing the teachers, they have voted to go along with the proposed changes of the plan.
So, if any, any of the member units of the trust they called, have adopted these negotiation agreements, they'll become looking, there'll be no need for them, and it'll just not exist. So, if the trust reverses, the plan design changes, these agreements will just go away?
If the plan, if the trust does that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a bad answer.
Sorry. So, just to, Bob, is it okay if I?
Oh, yeah, yes, Claire, I'm sorry.
To ask, that's important information to hear from Bill, that what we're being asked for tonight is to allow, you know, the district to go and support voting no, which is what happened last time at Waitley.
No, exactly the opposite.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question, sorry.
It's exactly the opposite, Waitley is voting yes, all we were, we were doing as a committee is taking the $28,000, that, 25% of the $28,000 savings in Waitley is $7,000, how it was going to be divided among the 13
How it was going to be divided among the 31 subscribers in the Town of Waitley. The savings that the Town of Waitley was going to realize from the changes, we went, we were given all the changes, the changes in the deductibles, the changes in the co-pays, everybody saw what each one was going to be. The town was going to realize 28,000 dollars in savings in Town of Waitley. The law requires 25% of that money be returned to the subscribers. So the 31, 31 subscribers in the Town of Waitley's plan are going to split the $7,000. And I am.
Okay, hold on for one second, okay? We are going into executive session to talk about the trust, okay? So I'd rather hold our comments to them, this is public comment, let's, let's, give them the public comment. Later on, we'll, we'll be going to executive session to talk about the insurance advisory committee.
Thank you, I was trying to understand.
Yeah. They came, they came before us tonight because there's public comments, so.
So just to clarify that, so there's a formula that, under this law, that the, the changes to the, the plan design, co-pays and deductibles, they add that up, the total value of that by each unit, town or schools, and they say that you have to give at least 25% to the unions in those towns or schools. If the trust says no increases to co-pays and deductibles, that $7,000 cost to the Town of Waitley just goes away. The $27,000 cost to Frontier, which is equal to 25% of your quote-unquote savings, would just go away. It would, it wouldn't, the trust would pay for it out of that 1.5 million, it would actually cost them 1 million. So that's what we're advocating for, and it would, and that's how it would save you money. From our perspective.
I don't, you know, the public comment was great and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just don't want everybody talking about the same thing. If you have a couple more people that want to talk, it's fine. Five minutes, try to hold it to five minutes, if you could.
Sure. Hi, I'm Steve Blider, and I teach math here at the high school. And so I won't go over percentages, but you know, how it would affect us, the, immediately off the bat, we'd spend 200 more on if you have a family plan on prescription, and if you were to get admitted to a hospital, it's 500 more than what we pay this year. Single test, like a scan, is another hundred. You could easily see a family incurring an additional $1,000 in costs. And that would not be hard to imagine in a family with kids. So the plan impact to us, if you're on a family plan, could, could easily be 1,000 or more. And as Paul said, from our perspective, if we can reverse the trust's plan, and it would save us money, and we believe it would save you money, it would seem like, you know, kind of an easy decision from our perspective. So thank you.
Thanks. If there's no other public comment, we'll, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, did you say we were going to do this in executive session first?
It's on a revised agenda.
And just, why is that? Why can't we just talk about this? Is there state secret? Insurance trust?
Um, collective bargaining sessions with the insurance advisory committee.
I think, I think originally, this was put on the agenda because we are in negotiations regarding what's to happen with the excess money. Since then, there's going to change in approach by the, by the association to go after the trust itself and to get them to change. So originally, when this, this agenda came out, that was not the topic that was going to be discussed. It was going to be discussed, that we're in negotiations, to talk about what was going to happen with the, within the new agreement, under the new GIC proposal, which, you know, so since then, earlier this week, there's been a change in the direction that we should be looking at the trust, and the trust is holding too much money, and the trust is doing things inappropriately, or however you want to say it, and they want to split pressure on the trust. So it's different, when this agenda came out last Friday, that was not, again, you Lynn, would you agree? We were talking about the fact that we were in negotiations regarding this, and to get everybody up to speed of what was happening in those negotiations. And we had a meeting on Tuesday, didn't go very far, and so we are here.
So it would sound like the reason for going into executive session is now moot, and we should just talk about this, deal with it, let's get it done.
I have it as an executive session.
Will we go into executive session to discuss?
Well, that's not, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be down towards the end. Okay? There's no student advisory person tonight?
Unfair and unusual punishment, I think.
Huh?
Unfair and unusual punishment, right.
Next is Frontier Regional Building Renovation Subcommittee.
I have, where are we at right now with the subcommittee? And I asked the, any of the members on the subcommittee to jump in if I go astray. We're continuing to talk about different funding options. One of the things I need from folks tonight is I'm handing around a contract that I need to have approved by this committee to go, we, I talked about him last time, Joe Markarian from FERCOG has been, come on to us as a consultant, and we need to formalize our relationship with him through a contract. And as you can see on the contract that I'm handing out, I know it's still making its way around, but I'm going to keep talking anyways. We're looking to spend up for the year, our calendar plan is to have this complete by December, the end of December. He is looking to, well, FERCOG is looking to contract him out to, not to exceed $5,000 in services to us. He doubts it'll reach even that high. We do have a line item in the current budget to pay for that, that we saved on Patty left, so I'm going to make the, look it up. Finance Professional Services, under expenses, Financial Professional Services, we have $13,000 in that account, so we have the money to pay for it. It was voted 8-0 in the subcommittee, both select, the four select boards and the four members on this committee voted for it. We think that his, his input is invaluable, and I'd ask any of the other members of the subcommittee to...
He's the bee's knees.
Either agree or suddenly disagree.
He's the bee's knees. That guy is like the municipal finance. Wow.
He, but he served, served, he worked for 20 years with Department of Revenue, or 30 years with Department of Revenue, some astronomical number, and then he's also working, consulting these kind of projects dozens and dozens of times. His job is just to assist us, it's not to direct us, he's been very clear about that. And I think the fact that we, with our select board and the many different opinions that are on that subcommittee, to all certainly agree without, without pause that we should hire him on to do that, I, and to be honest, I'm not sure he could do it without. So, how's that for a?
Yeah, I agree.
So I need a vote, so then I can, Bob, we have to sign off on the contract.
Yes, Chair.
Darish, I thought we agreed with a different date than June 30th. He's got a June 30th on this. Thought we talked about...
We did. Did I hang up the wrong dated one?
It says June 28.
Mine's June 28.
Mine says June 30.
But the scope word says December 31st.
Yeah, so they sent me a revised edition that says December 30th, I have it. So the one that'll be signed off on, so if everybody could go to that where it's a schedule, third paragraph, it goes from 2/25/18 to, I should say, 12/31/18. And I have that copy somewhere, and I'll go through my notes here to find it, that you have officially signed the correct one. But it was, originally, it was for the whole year.
Move we authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
All in favor?
All right, thank you. I'll get you that copy, Bob, and we'll get that signed off. Other than that, there's no real, it's late in the evening, there's different scenarios being talked about. We're going to talk about it again at the next meeting. He's already got new numbers to hand out. At that point, when we have a little more time, we'll go through and start talking about the direction we're heading, but I think people are full there, and I'm not really prepared to, so how about that? That's all I got for that, unless it was from the committee.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for a few of us that are on the committee? I mean, the guy from Frank and Colin Cog is very knowledgeable. When you, when he talks, it's like your head pops and listens to him because he's, he's full of knowledge, and if he doesn't have the answer, he'll, he'll get it for us too, so.
He's the former selectman at the Swampspit.
Okay, we got policies next, and votes on them, and, correct me if I'm wrong, on every one except for GB-1 that we're going to table for now, correct? Do we need a motion?
I will make a motion to table GB-1.
Second. Bob, any other discussion on tabling it? All in favor? All opposed? Obstained? I'm just asking. I didn't see your hand go up, so.
No, I, I would deal with it now. So I would, I guess, if I have to be, if I have to vote.
That's all right. You have the right. So, so we have all these policies, our committee's done pretty good, we wish we had more for this vote, you know? If you got any particular questions, you know, the good thing about it, Lynn did present them, we talked, we made changes, came back the next meeting, we were trying to meet almost weekly to come up with these. I know one night Mary and I were all by ourselves. We didn't have a quorum, but that's all right, I won't hold it against you guys. But if no one's, I mean, I'm not sure if we can just group them together and just vote them all at once.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any other question about any of the policies other than GB-1? So I need a motion to accept.
Call it question.
All in favor?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. New business, update on the proposed sale of Christian Lane, the Blue School.
Good news there.
Your chair, so you could speak.
Good news there. The bids are officially opened. We got one bid.
The bid.
The bid. The bidness.
Got a bid?
And it was more than zero. So that's our, that's, that's, that's how we feel about that. Yeah, the, uh...
More than zero.
Yeah, not much.
That's public, that number's public.
The number's public. So the bid was $1,000, $1,000 for our parcel and $1,000 for the Waitley parcel for a grand total of $2,000, because both parcels are together, because remember, we don't own our own septic, Waitley owns our septic, they just own the septic, we own the building.
How do we feel about that?
So... There's a proposal for units of housing that goes along with the whole thing.
It's going to turn the school into 10 apartments.
The school becomes 10 apartments, and then there's another building with, I don't know.
What our subcommittee voted tonight was to notify the Town of Waitley that, that we have an offer, and that their contract or deeds, restrictions and buybacks, and they have a first right of refusal, we have to give them notice, and if they choose to buy it, they can buy it for the bid plus a dollar.
So $1,001?
Yeah.
Let's hope.
Okay, so, but we haven't made any other recommendations at this point.
It's not the same guy, but if you're familiar with what they did with the Montague Center School?
Yep.
And so the thing is that it's not, it's not like to be evaluated against a perfect, like, oh, it would be great if we could get 100,000, whatever, but it's sort of like, what's the alternative if?
If we don't.
Yeah, and that is like having a dead building and having a huge insurance cost every year.
I mean, there's still, as a group, we do, we, we know, as Patty would say, there's still costs. She's estimating, not how, how, how she's getting it, but she's estimated it's still about a $40,000 cost approximately, that's what she was saying, to get rid of everything that's inside there, whether it's digitizing records, because there's a lot of records in here for all the schools. We love it if all the elementary schools and Frontier had a separate room that would take it all, that would be a big chunk of things. But there again, asking the schools for a particular storage area is kind of tough. So we're going to have to figure out digitalization, shredding, after doing that, I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it will add up.
How long does it take to purchase that building if everything goes right? If, if we accept that, 90 days? Are we going to be able to get that stuff out of there in 90 days?
Depends on how bad you want to get it out. You could do it. You just got to spend money.
Well, we have to, right?
But we don't have any money budgeted to do anything.
There we go.
Current year nor, unless you take it out of school choice or one of the revolving accounts, but that's just going to leave us a day short for the following year.
I will, I will vote whatever the committee thinks, because I do not have enough knowledge to say we should keep it or we should sell it.
Anyway, let's see what the Town of Waitley says, because they're going to have to vote at a town meeting.
So they get to, they get to get it for a dollar more than asking.
Yeah, but they also have to vote.
They're still having discussions about that. It's one of the few pieces of recreational land, there's a ball field there that they have. The town doesn't have a lot of room, so they've got to work that thing out for themselves.
So they can buy it from us for $1,001?
They can.
So we talked, so Fred was there today, and Fred brought up the same thing about the ball field. I said, Fred, it's a ball field that probably kindergarten, kindergarten, first and second graders play for softball. Supposing there's still $10,000 somewhere for the rec department to upgrade a field. We got a perfectly good field over at the elementary school that's not being used, plenty of parking in the back, and I bet you for around $10,000 or a lot less, they could put in a first and second grade softball field for first and second graders or third graders.
The older, the older grades use that field too. My daughter's...
So for our purposes...
I won't, huh?
It's terrible.
Yeah.
But for our purposes, we don't care what they do with it, we care that we follow process, right? Cloak up. So do we need a vote?
So their selectmen, their selectmen haven't even seen it yet, except for Fred, or talked about it. I think they're going next Wednesday, next Wednesday night would be the first time they'll, they'll talk about it.
Well, I hope they buy it.
They're not...
I'll go to the meeting.
They're not going to?
No, because it's going to be, the proposal's going to be $8,000 to $10,000 annual tax revenue for them.
There you go. They're not going to buy it.
Because they're going to, they're going to assume the same kind of problems that we've...
We've assumed.
Not going to have.
Not going to have. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion about it? Okay, school choice recommendations?
You should have it in your packet.
It's very similar to what we've seen in years past. In high school, we can easily take in 10 in each grade level. We don't get that except maybe in ninth grade, we can, I think last year we had about seven or eight into ninth grade. The grades above that, that's just a number, we'll get one or two for each grade level. The middle school, you know, looking at eighth grade, the numbers are a little bit larger, so, you know, we're looking at up to five. Again, that's probably about what I get normally for school choice, around that, so if I had six, I'd probably take all six, that kind of thing, and you guys have given me that range before. If you look at seventh grade, we talked about that number, if you look at the number below, it says 126. That's not a realistic number to the class command. I'm predicting, based on past year's numbers, that we're going to be around 105. So I can, I can easily take, it says greater than five, I could probably take up to 10. We'll see how those numbers, as I get the numbers updated from the elementary schools of who's, as they find out, because the way it works is they don't have to really tell us, so it's kind of by word of mouth until the enrollment happens at the end of the school year. So they're going to private schools, they really don't have to tell us until they're gone. So we, we do get pretty good information from the teachers and from the schools, so it's, you know, it's not like they, it's not like signing day that they, they have to declare where they're going.
Do they ask for like records before they go to their...
They'll ask for records, and that's usually the, thanks Bob, that's exactly what happens, that's usually the indicator. Schools aren't asking for records yet, because we're still making them. You know what I mean? And so that's the, so a lot of it is word of mouth. So we get a, we'll have a greater idea, and as we get, as that number lowers, I add to it with school choice. We probably have a half a dozen to probably six to 10 in seventh grade waiting for an approval to, to come. So as you know, we're a big choice, big choice school, and, you know, the sooner I can let them know, which I will do after this meeting, especially those who've already applied, I will do so. So that's basically a wrap, you know, I'm not going to be pushing that number, you know, certainly above 115, you know, again, the way we break up the classes, it's still classes of under 24, under 22 at this point, could even be under 20 if that number goes below 105, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to recommend school choice be at the discretion of the principal. Is that proper?
Any other discussion? All in favor? I have nothing collaborative, have?
Yeah, we have given out a day long.
How was the food?
Food, eh, I didn't really care that much more to tell you the truth. You know, I like my food.
It just made me hungrier.
A good turnout, and the executive director went through his evaluation and all of his exhibits and what have you, and it's very extensive. I think that he could write a handbook for executive directors based upon what he's got in there for all of his, all the information and all of his exhibits and stuff. It would be a good handbook anyway. And other than that, we haven't done anything more relative to real estate since the last time, and that's where we are.
Anybody have any questions for Bob about the collaborative?
No, just thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Hopefully, there'll be better food next time.
Well, we want to be in a green field next time.
Okay.
We were in North Hampton the other day.
Perfect. Darius, do you have anything else for us?
Yeah, let me just be quick. You guys can read the other ones, but I just wanted to, for the kind of the public record, I just want to thank everybody who participated in helping out with Wizard of Oz, David Peck, Melissa Strelke, Denise Sittler, Max Sherrill from the staff, and the amount of parents and community members that stepped up. There was, this was the biggest show that we've had, at least the 10 years I've been here. The attendance was through the roof. It was just impressive overall, and was just a takeoff in the musical last year, so I'm just very proud of that. And the other thing I wanted to kind of highlight is that we selected our Teacher of the Year, your Ritz School Award winner, Mrs. Chevy Seeny, who teaches high school chemistry for the most part and other high school sciences as well, and she is well deserving, and she'll be honored at the annual dinner at the Vlog Cabin, I think it was April 26. So those are the two highlights that I want to make sure, have the camera at 9:20 something.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into executive session. MGLC 38S 2182 to update committee on collective bargaining session with the Insurance Advisory Committee. I don't think it's going to take too long, and Allison, we'll see you later. You guys, we'll come get you.
Are we just coming out, Darius?
Likely.
Yes.
Keep your mouth...